Order of the Pleasant Grove City Council Work Session this evening, June the 2nd, 2020. It's now past 4:30, and I welcome all who have joined us here and those on our YouTube channel. And welcome staff, and we have all council members present and accounted for. And so we will start our session for our first discussion this night on our fiscal year budget. To the Administrator.
Sorry, I had to make a note before I forgot something. Okay, we've been working on our budget for a few months now, and we're getting to a point now of something where we will have ready for our June 23rd meeting, which will be our public hearing and adoption of the budget. So just as a reminder, in two weeks, normally we meet on the 3rd Tuesday, we will not be meeting on the 3rd Tuesday. We've always not met on the 3rd Tuesday because of Strawberry Days, and I don't, I don't know exactly what Strawberry Days has planned, but we did schedule this for June 23rd. So this will be our, the 4th Tuesday, we'll meet, we'll have a regular work session, regular meeting as far as that's concerned, and one of the things will be our public hearing and adoption on the budget. So this is our one-pager that we have, what we call the one-pager, which gives a synopsis of where we're at with revenue projections and potential expenses. And so I don't think there's anything up here that you haven't seen before, with the exception of maybe the deer mitigation, and we'll talk about that in a minute. On the revenue side, we are anticipating a loss of revenue or a reduction in revenue of just under $1.1 million. That is 750,000 worth of sales tax, 142,000 and change for building and planning permits, and then other revenues, about 300,000. So that's, we're seeing a decrease in ambulance fees, court fines, some of these things that have been impacted. As we put these projections together, we're hoping that we are high on the numbers that we are projecting as far as the potential decrease, if that makes sense. So if our sales, the sales tax at 750,000 is actually a 12% reduction in our sales tax revenues from the previous year.
And Scott, we've got March numbers, is that correct?
Yeah, so we have our March numbers, which, March came in great. There was an anticipation we were going to have a shortfall in March on our sales tax revenue. We actually came up with more money than we had the previous March, that's usually what we compare against. And when we looked at the breakdown of businesses and our sales tax generators, really our grocery stores and Amazon carried the day for the city.
And do you know what our March projection was supposed to be, based upon that 1.1 million?
So this, the March has nothing to do with this number here?
Well, but we, but we probably estimated March is, March is a reduction as part of that 1.1 million, right?
Not necessarily, because this, this number just reflects July 1st through June 30th.
Got it.
So all March was doing was kind of giving us an idea of-
Where we were headed into it.
Corona.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Really, the big number is going to be our April number, which I think is going to be more consistent with the impacts on our budget, and we won't get that number probably till the 3rd week in June, about the time we're ready to adopt our, our final budget. And we had recommended we just leave that number as is, and then if our numbers come in better for April, then we can start having discussions. As you'll see, as we've committed to expenses, we're already somewhat accounting for this idea that we're probably not going to lose $750,000 in sales tax, in a sales tax reduction. We're kind of hedging in a way and anticipating that that number's not going to be that bad. But until we get some actual numbers, then it's, it is a little bit difficult to actually say this is exactly where we're going to be. Yep.
Regarding the monies that is being held by the county?
Uh huh.
Is this going to offset any of this, or do we don't know?
No, generally speaking, no. The county, the care money that the county is right now been allocated, and, and we're going to find out pretty soon if we're going to get a direct allocation of that money, or whether they're just going to reimburse expenses. But the guardrails on that money is it can't be for loss of revenue. We can't use it for a reduction in sales tax, it can only be related to specific expenses due to the coronavirus.
Okay.
So we've bought a bunch of hand sanitizer, disinfectants, hand sanitizer stations, cough guards, I mean, those types of things, we'll get reimbursed out of that money for all of that, but that's just a pass-through, really, and so it doesn't really impact our, our base budget. Because what we've done so far, what we've done so far is fiscal year 20, so it doesn't, this doesn't contemplate that. But if we get into October and we need to get some more things due to coronavirus, then we have a specific account where we charge it to, and then we get reimbursed, and so the, the net effect on the budget is, is zero. Is there a question?
No.
This is on, yeah, do I need to speak into it a little better? Okay, so that's, that's where we are on the revenue side. We do have the dispatch savings, 165,000, which is going to be wonderful and very helpful this year for our base budget. But when you get to the bottom of where we're at, we are planning on using our one-time capital monies from last year, that's 900,000, and then the rest of the money in order to accomplish our budget would need to be our reserve account. So we, right now, we're earmarking $445,000, $445,920 out of the reserve account. Now, if our revenues come in better than what we're anticipating, there's a good chance that we're not going to have to use any of that money out of the fund balance. In fact, if things bounce back quicker than what we are anticipating, we might be able to even capture some of our capital money back and be able to put that back into capital as opposed to operations. So this is where we're at today, and we'll monitor this on a monthly basis as our sales tax revenues come in and as we, you know, look at some of these expenses. Because on the right side is the additional expenses that we will be incurring for this fiscal year that we're going to commit to with council approval, which is our employee recognition program, the Communities That Care, which is something we entered into an agreement in, in January. We did have $20,000 set aside for potentially some administrative help in the police department, and we would like to reallocate that to code enforcement, which would help the police department in the sense that right now they have a police officer that is designated as code enforcement. Now, how much time we get out of them depends on how many people we're down. We're down four people now, so they don't have time to do code enforcement, they're doing police stuff. We would move the code enforcement position into the community development, so we, we're not going to have this conflict of where they're going to spend their time. So that would be the intention of that $20,000. We've also, by, by state law, were required to change our fire and police retirement systems to account for those employees that were in the Tier 2 retirement system, which is those that have been hired after, I think, 2011 is when they changed the, the retirement system for new hires. The state legislature said we want them to have the same retirement as the Tier 1 people. Well, it costs more money in order to do that, so that's the additional cost to the city. The state law did say that the city was required to pick up a certain percent, and then the employee would pick up the rest of it, and most cities we've talked to, the city's going to be picking up the employee and the employer portion. So that's what we're recommending to do. And then we have wage increases at $325,000, and what, what we'd like to do with that is to have a kind of a flat rate across the board for our employees. So not necessarily a percent, but a flat rate on what they're going to be. So it would be, in essence, 2% of the aggregate money divided evenly amongst the employees. So those that are a little bit on the lower end of the pay scale will benefit a little more greater percentage-wise than those on the higher end of the pay scale, which is, I think, a good idea for us because some of our problems we're having on retaining employees is more on the lower end of the pay scale, not necessarily on the higher end. So that would be the intention. Now, what we'd also recommend is that we take the, the dispatch savings, so that says 165, well, 20 of that is going to the part-time code, so that leaves 145, and what we'd like to recommend is that we take that money and split it up with our police and fire on a, on a per-person basis, so just a straight-up flat rate for them as well. The purpose of that is, again, similar. We do want to get more money into the lower end of the pay scale than into the higher end. In fact, as part of that dispatch money, our management-level employees in both police and fire will not be receiving that. This will go to patrol sergeants, detectives, and then captains and firefighters on the, the fire department end, with the intention of really getting our wages higher for police, well, I mean, police and fire. Police, we have a bigger problem than we do with fire as far as retaining and attracting. We have positions open right now, and we have our starting wages too low. So this would help bolster the starting wage to, to help us attract people that are already experienced, as opposed, or at least post-certified. I mean, we've had some where they weren't even post-certified, and we, we helped put it, put them through post as a city, which is an option for us, but we'd always prefer that somebody's at least post-certified, and then if they actually have a couple of years' experience, that's fantastic, because then their training is a lot less on, on the front end. So that's what we're recommending to the city council in regards to the wages. Now, that, so it's 2% of our aggregate, and it's, the 145,000 split up amongst, I'm going to say it's close to 35 of our police and fire. So that, that spits out a number, and, and we're fine-tuning what that number actually is, but that's what we'd recommend to the council, for you to say, okay, we're comfortable with that, and then we'll start putting that into, into motion. Obviously, that doesn't happen until you adopt the final budget in three weeks, and we will have a public hearing if there's anybody that wants to come and comment on that. The last thing is deer mitigation, and this is something that we've been working on for a while, and I'm going to, next item is to go over our control plan and some nuts and bolts on, or the high-level view of what a contract looks like in order to do this. But there is a cost, there's $15,000 of a cost, and so we'll, we'll talk about that in a minute, and if the council says we don't want to do that, then that 15,000 drops off. If the council's okay with that, then that will, that will stay in the budget. So, and there is one other thing I want to address, and that's the vacation time for employees. So we, we've, we have a cap, employees have a cap of how much vacation they can carry over year to year. So we recently increased that cap from 120 hours to 168. And what we ran into, well, and we changed another thing, and that is, you have to be to 168 hours by the time you hit your work anniversary. So under the old system, when we had it at 120, we had everybody had to get down to 120 by the time January 1st rolled around. Well, that caused problems in December, because we had a lot of people trying to take time off because they had what we call use or lose. If you don't use the vacation, then you lose it. And, and so that inherently caused some issues. So, in fact, I think it was Kyler's idea, we'll have to give him some credit, to change it to the anniversary date, so now that's staggered, so we don't have, you know, a bunch of people trying to take a, a bunch of time off at the same time. So we changed that, and we changed the, the caps at the same time to 168. Well, what we found running into this year was that once we had the coronavirus hit, we had people that had scheduled vacations that no longer were able, not able to take, and particularly if they were traveling. So either the place they were going was locked down, their flights were canceled, or wherever that was happening. So we have employees now that have come back and said, well, ah, you know, we wanted to do this vacation, we're not able to, and now my anniversary date's coming up, and I was going to burn 40 hours over spring break, and I didn't get that opportunity to do that. So what we would recommend to you is that for our fiscal, well, for calendar year 2020, that when people reach their anniversary, we don't necessarily take any vacation away from them, and we just let the employees know that by the time you hit your anniversary date in 2021, you need to be back down to the 168. If they're not back down to 168, then they lose, they lose that time.
So Scott, their anniversary date or the year-end?
Anniversary date.
So if their anniversary date is May, is May 31st?
They have a year, really, to get their vacation used.
Do we want that, or we want that just by the end of the year?
I don't think they'd get, if we do it by the end of the year, we're going to run into a major problem in December.
Staffing.
I don't, to, the cost to the city doesn't change.
No.
I don't think.
Just the manage, just the management of it?
Yeah, it, once we went to anniversary dates, there's a little bit more of a, a little bit more of a management side of that, but I, I think it'd be better for us to stretch that in. I, because I don't know how many people are getting away this summer, so I don't know how many people are-
Yeah.
-just kind of stacking this vacation up, and then all of a sudden, you know, the world opens up in September and, and they have this use or lose time, and all of a sudden we have half the city gone. So, but if we could extend it into their next anniversary year, that gives them time to, to use their time. And if they don't, then, you know, they had time to use it. We, we have employees that give back vacation every year. I mean, they-
Yeah.
-they don't use it all, and, and, you know, that's, that's okay, that's their choice, but it's not uncommon, I should say. So any questions regarding the one-pager or the vacation cap? Okay, so you'll, you'll see something very similar to that. I didn't mean to do that. Okay, let's talk deer mitigation. So when we do deer mitigation, the process is, first of all, we have to do what's called a COR, which is a certificate of registration to the Division of Wildlife Services that we're looking at doing a urban deer control plan for lethal removal. And this is something that we did last fall, we had these discussions, council said we wanted to head that direction, and so we filed the paperwork, and they come back and say, okay, here's what you can do. So it says we can have the lethal removal of up to 100 deer per year. That's where I'm reading. 100 deer per year, of which 25 may be antlered from August 1st to October 31st, is when they can take out the antlered. And from August 1st to December 31st, if they're not antlered, they can take deer to that point. It also does give us authorization to use a bolt gun if they're going to be trapped to euthanize the deer in that manner, if that's after dark. So that's what we're authorized to do, and now we're required to do a control plan, which we have put together.
Just a small question.
Yes.
What's a bolt gun?
It's a gun that they just-
Come see me.
And it shoots a bolt into their brain and euthanizes them.
Oh, got it.
So there's not a live round or anything like that.
So you, they trap it, and then-
To, to do what?
Euthanizer.
Yes. By us.
But I mean, like, this is going down to division, this is just what our discussions with the council, you're, you're seeing, it could require in the plan, just what's coming up.
So the- The division requires us to do a plan.
Every year?
No, just one time. So we create the plan, we're required to have a public hearing on the plan. What I'm showing you is just the draft. So this is so I can get feedback from you on, on what the plan is, there are certain requirements that we have to meet within the plan.
Is this, is this in our packet?
Yes, it's in where you go, when you click on agenda, so it's not in the packet. If you go to where you click on agenda-
Yep.
-it's a separate document.
Okay, thank you.
So what the, what the control plan does is, is, I mean, like I said, they give us requirements that we're supposed to do. So first of all, we're supposed to have a COR, which we have received, and then we, we have estimates on what our population is, we're, we're, we don't know, we haven't actually tracked it, but we're, we know we have quite a few. So we use the number for 400 to 500, which DWR is okay with that number. And then the idea is, actually, the plan is for three years, now that I think about it, and at the end of the three years-
The plan or the contract? Is the contract for three years?
The plan, so the contract, we'll get into the contract in a minute.
Okay, all right, sorry.
So the, the plan is what DWR is going to agree to, the contract is who we're going to have taking care of the deer. So if they get 100 deer a year, then our population will decrease from 400 to 500 down to 100 to 200. That's if they get all 100 every year. So the person's eligible to perform the deer removal, and most cities use Brian Cook and Humphries Archery, so I've talked with Brian quite a few times, we're working on putting an agreement together. He's the one that has given me, here's what the prices are, here's what we charge, and I'll get into that in a minute, the details of that. When we do our public hearing and approval of this, then we would have the contract at the same time, so that by August 1st, everything's ready to go and, and they can get going. So they can use baiting, if you, and I don't know if you remember, but we passed an ordinance saying you can't feed deer, it's illegal for you to feed deer. That's one of the requirements that the division said, is that you have to have an ordinance saying it's illegal to feed deer. So we can set up baiting, and the purpose of baiting is to get the deer in a, in a specific spot, so that they can either shoot them with a bow and arrow, or they can trap them and euthanize them, that's with the bolt gun. So there's two methods that they can use. Spotlighting is when they shine flashlights, and, and they try not to do this because it's disruptive as far as all that's concerned, but generally, they're saying if, if they have to pull out the flashlights, it's because they had to track an animal down that maybe got shot and ran a little bit, then they might need to, to do that. So they, they're allowed to use archery equipment, use of firearms or archery equipment, but what, as you get down to the lethal methods of take, it's a bolt gun or archery tackle only, so we're not authorizing them to use a gun in order to do this. So the locations of where we put the bait boxes are going to be determined, though, Humphries will have an idea of where the best spots are, and then we can put them there for a while, and then they can move them. They don't like to move them a bunch of times, because it is a lot of effort on their part. So he says generally, if it's reasonable, then we'll move them, but if you keep asking to move them every week, then we're going to start charging you for that. But for the most part, if you, and, and he said for our size city, you can, two or three ought to get it done, so two or three different bait boxes. Now, what we, and I'll get into the cost of that here in a minute. So we have tagging requirements, which is an animal, well, we'll have 100 tags, that's what we're allowed to do. So we'll have 100 tags, and every time they get a deer, these guys will have the tags with them, they'll tag the deer, they have to log it into a spreadsheet, they have to record all this stuff, and it's going to be on Humphries Archery to do all the recordation of that, and then they turn that into Division of Wildlife Resources, so they can see exactly how many deer we got in a specific year, and what kind, and where, and they, they, they do that. So that's the, so the, the tag is issued by us, but we just give them the tags, and then they'll let us know whenever they take out a deer. And then they, the deer control harvest survey is something that they maintain and that they send to DWR as part of the requirement. So they're required to take deer from whatever property. Now, we're allowing them to do these bait boxes on either public or private property, so if, we might have a citizen say, please, put this in my backyard, because I have a bunch of deer, and if Humphries looks at that and says, okay, this is a good spot, and the resident's willing, then we can put it on private property. If there's some public property that we own that we feel is justifiable and safe, then we can have them put it on public property. So they'll, they'll work with us on where that is. I, I wouldn't know where to put these things, but these guys are the experts, and they, they would know how to do that.
A lot of us could tell you where all the deer are.
Yeah. Your garden, right? I've, I've taken three phone calls in the last two months about deer. I don't know if you guys have been getting phone calls or emails, but I've had three different residents call up, and they're frustrated that the deer are eating their gardens as they've been planting them, so. The, all evidence of deer must be removed from the property, they're not allowed to field dress the deer on site. The hunter is allowed to keep the animal if they want to, and then any antlers obtained by lethal removal have to be turned into DWR. So there's chronic wasting disease samples, that's part of the requirement for Humphries, is they have to do, there's a test they have to do that's required to see if this, if the particular deer has chronic wasting disease as part of it, so that's, so they can, they can kind of track that, so. The date of public meeting right now, I have scheduled for July 7th, 2020, for us to do our public hearing. I have sent this into Wes Alexander, he's the, the guy that oversees this for DWR in our area. Wes says the plan looks fine to him, he said he'll be here at the public hearing, so if there's any questions, and then I'm hoping I can get Brian Cook here as well with Humphries. What the charge is, for each bait box, it's $2,500. So if we do two boxes, this is annually, if we do two boxes, that's $5,000, if we do three, it's $7,500, and then it's $75 per deer that they get. So if we were to do three bait boxes and get all 100 deer in a given year, that's where our $15,000 budget number comes from. So that's, is there any questions, thoughts, concerns regarding the plan or the money aspect of this?
Scott, and how do they determine where to put the, the bait?
I don't know. I think they have a sense of where the deer are going to be, and then they'll, that's where they'll put the bait boxes. So I, I, I don't know their specific method, and, you know, if Brian can come on July 7th, you can ask that question.
Okay.
He can, he can tell you exactly where.
Has there ever been a count on how many deer we think we have?
We don't have an official count, we just have been estimating.
I have a question for the council, is that, do you think we have 500, do you think we have more?
At least.
I think we have more.
Oh, we, we might have more, but we can do 100, we're allowed to do 100 per year.
Yeah, but you've, you've estimated kind of 500, right? I just, I want to, I want to see what the impact would be, right? If we, what's, what's the impact if we, if we have 1,000 deer, it's 10%?
So I think in my, in my block, I've got 20. But I don't know, you know, I know that over by Smith's, there's probably 50 there.
Yeah, there was one crossing Geneva the other day.
I know on Fifth North-
Just take them out with your vehicle.
Right by Fugel.
Fourth East, there's probably 20 in that backyard, so.
When I, when I, when I gave them that number, Wes Alexander said that sounds about right, I mean-
Yeah.
About 500?
Yeah. It, being the DWR guy, he'd probably have a general idea of what we have.
And he's saying, and he's saying they could possibly get it down to-
100 per year.
100 per year.
And the, to, talk to us about the contract, then, is this a one-year contract?
Three-year.
Well, the, the contract is as long as we want it to be.
Okay, but it's just, it's not, we're not locking ourselves in for three years.
No, whenever we-
Just a renewable contract.
Yeah, whenever we write a contract like that, we always have a 30-day out, but we just give them 30 days' notice, and we can step out of the contract.
So I think probably my question would be, with that $15,000, is this something that, is this one of those items that we can hold off on, on the COVID year, and start next year and save that $15,000 for right now, or is this something that we just want to move ahead with?
Well, I don't think $15,000 is going to do anything to us on, but the sooner we start working on the deer, the sooner they'll quit populating as much.
It's true.
Yes, so speak to us about the timing again, so they can, they can take them from-
August 1st to December 31st.
So that's when they're going to take all 100?
No, I thought it was October.
Well, October is for antlered. So they're, for the antlered, they can only go for three months.
Yeah.
Then for the non-antlered, they can go for five months.
So where do they get-
But the window's always August 1st to December 31st. So when, when I had the people call two months ago, they're like, somebody needs to take care of the deer, I'm telling them, we can't do anything until August 1st, and that's if the council decides that this is what we're going to do, but, you know, there's nothing we can do about it today.
That's a DWR, you know, for the health of the, of the deer.
Well, and that's the hunt.
Well, it's, and there's a reason why the hunt's that, that time of year.
Yeah, because of-
Their, their breeding happens.
Their breeding.
Yeah.
The 100 number is just something they set and say that's-
Yep.
-a magical number, and they say that's as high as you can go, okay.
We send it in, and they send the thing back and say, here's what you get.
And the meat would be donated, is that, is that how that works?
No, that, well, it just, the hunter is allowed to keep the meat if they want to, I don't know what they do with it if-
I thought about that same thing.
It may be donated.
No, I'm sorry, maybe, so-
The hunter can keep the meat.
Humphries or Antler?
Uh huh.
The carcass is removal and disposal, it says address of donating meat. Other cities will donate it sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would imagine that that would cost more money.
I don't know.
Well, we're, we're not, the way this is written, we're not going to possess the meat at any point as a city, Humphries is going to possess the meat.
Right. Right.
So if they donate it, if they, if the hunter that gets it gets to keep the meat or whatever, that's what this contemplates.
But the antler, antlers are surrendered to DWR in every case.
Yeah, what Brian told me is if it's like a little two-point, they don't, DWR is not.
Right.
But if it's a, if it has a big rack, then they, they have to turn those into DWR.
Okay.
And I do know that there are two of those that live in my hood.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And they're not afraid of us.
You guys are providing the food for.
Yeah, my, my take is that we move forward.
Yeah.
I'm anxious for a public hearing.
Yeah, so the public hearing will be July 7th, and we'll, I mean, we'll post it as we normally do, and, and we'll see if the, the public has some opinions on it.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else, Scott?
That's all I have for you.
Okay.
Scott, where are we at? Getting Utopia to come in, the representative?
They're coming on the 23rd.
Okay.
So they're coming our next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're going to come and do their presentation and talk about what they can or can't do, and, and then we can give them direction on what we want them to do. So Roger Timmerman will be coming in. I just got that situated about a week ago.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Okay.
We'll now move to item number three, and we'll go through our staff business. And let's start with Marty back at the, back there. Well, this is our Public Works Director, for those who are listening in tonight, so.
Yes, good to be here. Lots of stuff going on, lots of stuff starting up. All of our construction projects that we've awarded recently are at least holding pre-construction meetings and starting in the next few weeks here, so. Even Battle Creek Springs, I think we've got a pre-construction meeting tomorrow to finish up the springs up on the mountain, so they'll be, I don't know. I think they're planning on towards the end of June that the snow will be off enough that they can get up there and finish the last two rehabilitations that we've got to do, and then finish up some of the grading and, and spreading of seed and other things like that that they have to do at the end of the project for the Forest Service, so. But everything's coordinated well there. Our filter project is nearing completion. Today, we received the filters from Israel that are supposed to be installed in the vaults. So those are about three months behind schedule, but they got here, and we will be installing those with the contractor. He's moved on to other projects and is coming back, so we've given him some time here to do that. So hopefully by mid Feb, mid February, mid-July. We wanted to get at least a couple of months of use, and typically, our highest debris flows and things like that coming out of the aqueduct or in, later in the summer when we have some of the mosses and things coming down the Provo River. So anyways, he may choose to move on then sooner, but we gave him at least another month and a half here so that he could work some time to get back in and get those installed, so. But shouldn't have a shutdown of service.
Is Battle Creek closed at all for hiking?
No, everything is back open. Everything's done. We're working on doing some fencing around the structure. But if you have a chance to walk up there and look at it, it's a neat little structure, and it was kind of fun. All of the old stuff we found trying to dig and figure out where everything was at, and it was a good challenge for us, and, but we made it all work, and it looks great, and it's working awesome, so. Works really well. 150 North starts, started this last week between 1300 East and 1400 East. This is Donna Jolly's road. The water line has started, and the road will be reconstructed here in the next couple of months here, so. Lots going on at 13th West as well. We're working on the bottom portion, which is from Pleasant Grove Boulevard to First South. That should be starting here in about three weeks. And then we've got the north portion that we're working on with Larry Myler. That portion, we're having a pre-construction meeting tomorrow, and should see construction going on that here in the next week. 700 South, too, where we've got a pre-construction meeting tomorrow. So as you can see, all of these things are happening at the same time. We've also got 900 West and 2100 North paved. That's all beautiful up there. If you want to take a drive through there, that's our newest road and looks great. So we have applications for engineering. We've received a number of applications. We'll be reviewing those and doing interviews hopefully in the next week or so, and trying to get somebody back to take Sean's place, so. Other than that, there's a few questions, I think, that have been coming through on a question on First West. And in short, I don't think there's a big issue here, so I'll try to, maybe while I have some time tonight, I'll try to draw up a little thing of, a sketch of what's going on there, and hopefully be able to answer your questions, and don't think that there's too big of an issue that we need to worry about. But we'll, we'll try to clarify that with you, so we know how to respond to that residence, so. Any questions for me?
Anything for Marty? Yeah, you're busy.
Yeah, lots going on.
Oh, did we, we get our sweeper truck yet?
Um, no. So things got delayed. We were expecting it by the end of May, and now they've told us that it's going to be by the end of July. So everything got kicked back two months, so hopefully that will stay on schedule. But we, they kind of shocked us at the last minute. When we thought it was going to be delivered, we called, and they didn't seem to know that it was supposed to be delivered, so. Anyways, in the end, it'll be here by the end of July is what they're telling us right now, so.
Hold out for Strawberry Days next year.
Yes.
Yes.
Heritage Days.
Heritage Days.
Oh. Yeah, tonight, we've got an item on there for budget amendment for a water line in American Fork on 1100 North. So as you're driving on 1100 North and you come to North County Boulevard, there's a section of road there that is completely in American Fork. Their boundary's on the south side of the road. It comes probably about 500 or 600 feet past North County Boulevard, and then it comes into Pleasant Grove. We have a water line that's stubbed to the corner there. There's a fire hydrant right on the corner of that intersection, and that's intended that that water line would be extended all the way to 1700 West. We didn't know about the project beforehand, but American Fork has decided to reconstruct that section of the road. And as they were going through that, we found out about it just about as, as getting ready to bid it. And we needed to put a water line under that road. We needed to extend that water line to 1700 West for a number of years now. It's in our master plans. So we quickly coordinated that with Horrocks to, since they were doing the design of the road as well, to throw in our water line project. And that's what you're going to see tonight, is a request for $100,000 for that item. And we, we will have an agreement with American Fork here shortly that we'll have to sign as well with regards to doing that work under their project and us reimbursing them for those costs, but. So that's what it is. It's, we're just taking the water line, and we're not even getting it to 1700. At this time, we're just trying to get it through their project so that we're not digging up a brand-new road, kind of like what we tried to do in ours as well. And anyways, it'll be a nice project, but that's, that's the item that we needed to change on that budget amendment tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Marty. Daniel Corres, Director, would you like to come up and tell us what's going on in community development? I know you're not busy at all, so.
So during this time, like I was explaining last meeting, we, we're kind of like lagging always for building permits or approvals. So in regards, when, when, we get really busy, I would say before the winter, because it's all the applications we got through the summer, right? So right now, we're just being hit by the applications that didn't happen during the winter. But surprisingly enough, during this situation that we just passed with the COVID and stuff like that, we did not slow down on home building permits. Like residential building permits were actually higher than last year. The other day, I went to, to Home Depot, and the line was huge. So people are, are working on their homes and doing things like that. So the building department did not slow down whatsoever during this, this period of time. We're fully open again, and we're taking some measurements, and, but staff is ready. We've always been there, and again, we're open for business. So far, so good.
Okay, anybody got anything to ask Daniel?
No.
Thank you. Just stay busy.
Yeah.
That means revenue.
Yep.
So Sherry, would you like to, or Rocha, would you come forward and, as our, our library director? Give us an update on how the library's doing?
Sure. So we reopened the day after Memorial Day, and everything went fine.
And it means to reopen, what does that mean?
Well, moved so that people could come into the building. We were doing the curbside delivery for quite a while, but now people can come in. And the first few days were kind of quiet, and it's mostly been quiet, but today actually was pretty busy. So I looked up how many we had yesterday, and we had 350 people come in yesterday. Overall, since we reopened, we've had about 1,400 come in. So that's a lot of people in the week who have been able to come utilize our services.
Very good.
About half of the people are wearing masks just voluntarily, and it, it's gone smoothly. People have been respectful, and I think it's going well. And we talked about the state requirement to, what's the word?
Track.
Yeah. They didn't say track, but yes, to track attendance. And the state library director pursued that because it seemed odd for libraries to have to do that. And so the state is planning to move libraries from the category it's in to retail, so that those requirements don't apply.
Good idea.
So, and yeah, we're, we're doing online summer reading programs. Got a lot planned with that. And, and some packets that people can either print or come in and get to still get prizes. It has started. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yep, that's it.
People won't be able to hear what you're, thank you, Sherry.
Thank you.
Director Wilk. Come and tell us how the pool's going. Looked like you had a pretty good crowd up there this afternoon.
Yeah, we, the pool is up and running as of Monday, and we had lines for the opening day going out, both, going up to the football field and down to the Veterans Memorial Park. There was a lot of people that came out, so a lot of people excited.
Have you hit capacity yet?
We've, the 350, we've come close to, to that number, but I think, and then the coming and leaving, it hasn't, we haven't had to turn anyone away.
Was we able to do those updates?
Yeah, so he's been updating on Facebook every hour or so, and giving the number that they have, so people can look there, and he's offered that, and so.
Has anyone been angry about waiting or anything, or have they not really had to wait?
They haven't really had to wait. Usually every year, the first, when we open, is people buy passes online, and they have to get all their passes and all those kinds of things, so. But I think everyone was grateful to, we had a resident contact me, and just, she was in tears when she came in because it was the first bit of normalcy she's had in like three months, and so she was really grateful for, to have something in her life. So it was awesome. The rec center is going well. Just an update for you guys, we are looking to go have everything open and change our hours back to normal hours on Monday.
Including daycare.
And, and the one thing I do have to, we, I talked to my daycare staff today. They've been doing a little investigative work into what other cities are offering. The only one that currently is offering daycare is Provo. And they can offer it at, they can take, they're doing an online reservation system, and also they can take about 12 kids at a time during that. So she talked to American Fork. They're fully open. They're not offering daycare. They're waiting until the green phase. And Lehigh is pretty much doing the same thing. So I'm, I think at this point, right now, we will keep that closed and kind of monitor that, but I would like to keep that closed at this point.
I mean, one of the issues is, I mean, the maintenance and the cleaning and all this stuff with the daycare is pretty overwhelming.
It is. The, yeah, a lot of the protocols that the state put in, and like, Provo has four employees at all times to do that, and, and they have a lot more room to space out, so when they say 12, ours is a little bit smaller, and we'll, as far as what kids we can have.
Well, and our, our current, our, our current age restrictions, is it 18 or?
It's down to 14 now, 14 and older, and.
So in order to open up the daycare, we'd have to obviously open up?
Yeah, and we're going to open up to children come Monday, so kids can come in the rec center.
Kids can, just not daycare.
Yeah, just not daycare. And we have restrictions for the weight room and the cardio room that certain ages can't be in there still, like we always have, so.
I would think that the daycare would be the last thing that would be clean.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, well, part of it is, is we want to start getting the passes to, I don't know if you already said that, Tyler.
No, that's a major part. We just want to start.
We've been, the last month, really, the services have been free. So in order for us to start charging passes, again, we need to have regular operating hours and no age limit.
So are, and are you fully staffed and able to open?
So yeah, just an update on our staff. We actually, Vanessa Seavey, who is our enrichment coordinator, she, over the break, found a job. Offered her some more hours, and, and so she hated working both jobs and working over 50 hours a week. Just, and so she just said, I'm going to stick with this one, and after 20 years, she's.
Wow.
Yeah, so that's going to be some big shoes to fill there, and so we're going to post for that position. You guys also, I don't know, Charlene Treneman, over the break as well.
Retired.
Retired. And we're, look, both of these people, we're looking to have a big shindig for as soon as we can, and have more than a certain amount of people. But, so those are two main employees that we've lost over, lost a couple of evening supervisors. But we're posting a lot of those jobs tomorrow, and we'll, we'll get those filled and get going again with them. We're missing some great people that have gave a lot of service to the recreation center, so.
Will you, just make sure you let us know when that retirement will be?
Yeah, for sure. Yeah.
Every retirement and then just going away. What about the school district opening up the tennis courts for the program, for our, to help with our program?
So I've reached out to a couple of people, because I, another problem with running tennis is we didn't have anyone apply over the, the time period that we had. And what's that? Yeah, to teach the lessons. And so I've just reached out to the high school tennis coach and a couple of people I've just known through the years, and they expressed some interest in running a camp in July, and so hopefully we'll get something. And we're currently registering for soccer, for, it'll start in August. It was awesome to be at the baseball fields. I went to the baseball fields last night. They were all being used at Discovery Park, and adult softball was going on over at the rodeo.
There were a lot of people at the Discovery Park last night.
Yeah, yeah.
All, all social distancing.
No, they weren't.
No, it was, it, that's what I love about my job, just being out there and seeing kid, everyone enjoying the ballpark again.
It was, yeah, it was good, it was, it was, it was a lot of people there.
Any other questions?
Concessions?
Yeah, running at the pool and at the ballparks.
Wonderful.
One of the hard, we're trying to, they're keeping, they put out the social distancing markers and whoever follows that, but, and then also Plexiglas has been really hard to find, but they're getting that installed as well, so. Trying to follow all the rules and still provide all the opportunities.
Will the Plexiglas be required when we go green?
Plexiglas? I, I don't think it's a requirement.
Well, no, it's not, but I think for the most part, we're probably going to keep this until the.
New normal.
Until, well, maybe forever, maybe until at least we have a vaccine and the viruses.
It's really hard to hear people at the rec center talking through that glass, but we've worked with it. But a lot of things that have come with this, like, green just includes better hygiene, providing more sanitizing equipment through, and we'll continue to do that for sure.
And that's why I'm thinking the daycare will be, there will be a new, a new normal.
Yeah.
I think that's at church, within the nursery. I think there's just going to be a new, whatever the, you know.
We've even talked about the thermometers for kids, just a quick, on their foreheads when they come in during flu season would just be beneficial for everyone, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Dionne, Director Giles, please come forward and talk to us about the parks.
People are out there. It's so fun.
Just a couple of things. We had our annual after Memorial Day cleanup today. It was pretty, pretty good to see all the decorations out there, but they had had it, and so we, I don't, I can't tell you how many truckloads we held at the dump, but it was a lot. So we all spent about four hours out there this morning cleaning that up.
Take, you use your whole crew then?
Yeah, we, we get everybody out there that we can. So it took us about four hours with all the equipment and, and anyway, it's good to have done. They'll start mowing again today. They started mowing today, so hopefully by next week, they'll be caught up and it'll be back to normal. If you haven't noticed, we did seed the Beck property. It's germinating pretty, I'm impressed with it. It's a new seed that we're trying.
Beck.
Yeah, Beck property.
We have a lower 40, what, I'm missing?
And then we have the tennis nets in. We need to get those up. And Kenny started today testing the new product that John Goodman recommended for the cracks in the concrete at the, or the asphalt, sorry, at the tennis courts. So we'll see how that goes and, and see how this product. It's, everybody's told us it's, it's a Band-Aid. You, you'll be doing this pretty much every year. So if we can keep on top of it, you know, and as these smaller cracks come up, then we won't have the big issues that we have. So we'll give it a shot and see what it does.
And Dion, how much was that? How much was that?
I haven't seen the invoice for it, but I want to say Kenny, I think he got 10 gallons and it was just over $1,000.
Okay. And you're thinking that 10 gallons will, will seal all the cracks in?
No. I, we're going to see how far 10 gallons will go. That's all they had in Salt Lake on stock. So I think it's going to take us probably double that, if not more. So there is a filler that we put in, which helps, you know, so we're not using so much product. And then you tape the sides. It's kind of a labor-intensive type thing, but you tape the sides so you could, you have good clean lines and anyway. Well, it's kind of a plastic pliable material, so we'll see how it holds up with the contracting and stuff through the winter.
And is that something you guys do or do you hire that out to have the cracks sealed?
Uh, yeah, we're doing it. So that'll be Kenny's job for the next couple of weeks, I think.
Could you hire it out if needed?
We've tried and no one will come in and, and do that for us.
Gotcha.
So. Any questions?
Anything else, Dion?
I, I feel like Kenny's going to be out there with a pastry bag.
It is, you know, it's, so it's kind of funny. He showed me the.
It's a big pastry bag.
He showed me the gun that, I mean, you mix, it's a two-part solution, right? You mix it and you, it's a big, it looks like a big squirt gun kind of, but you suck it up and then you go put it out. It'll be interesting to see how it works, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Doing a great job. Well, we have run out of time for our work session. And I didn't mean to neglect our two chiefs, but we'll give you both plenty of time in our regular council meeting to give reports. Especially Chief Roberts, you're probably going to have the most stuff we want to listen to about everything that's been going on here last week, so.